Again.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi. Good afternoon, I'm Paula Nissen and I work at the Department of Education in the Community Colleges Bureau. I'm also manage, I also manage the Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund, which is part of the Skilled Worker and Job Creation Fund. As you can see in the slide above or over to the side, these are all the components that we administer here at the department, and one of which is the Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund, which I'm going to cover today. The reason I'm covering it today is it's mandatory through code section 260(c) 18a that we prepare and submit to the Department of Education State Board for approval on an annual basis, the progress report for this fund, and then also the plan for the next year. You should have your attachments, the progress report by college overall, and appendices for last year. So fiscal year, academic year is usually what the data comes in as for 2021. And then there's a separate report that's called the WTED report or Plan for 2022. So both items need to be approved every year to do today. So Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund by cluster, there's $15 million that's distributed on a quarterly basis to colleges throughout the year. Seventy percent of which need to be spent on targeted areas such as advanced manufacturing, information technology, biotechnology, nursing, and renewable energy. The other 30% can be a combination thereof, or can be spent on other programs across the community colleges. But each one of the programs and the entirety of funds that are spent on an annual basis are, need to be reported to the department annually, and then these reports are generated off of those reporting mechanisms. The top expenditure by program for last year was in the area of career and technical education, followed then by retraining and operational contract training done through the community colleges for employers across the state. Third is in the career academies area, and as you can see, it's broken down in a pie chart there based on the program in which they spent the money. We did have about $1.9 million left over carry forward from the prior year. That was added to the $15 million that's received by the colleges for the year. The reason for the carry forward each year is based on expenditures that are already obligated or planned expenditures for the next year that sometime overlap into the following years. So in the appendices that accompany the progress report, you'll see what that carry forward is planned to be spent on in the upcoming years. That's all detailed for you in each one of the reports. The breakdown as far as expenditures by category are as such. $10 million was spent on direct program staff, in fact, deeper community colleges out of the WTED fund. And then the next is $1.96 million was on contract training expenses. Normally speaking, if we're out of the pandemic, it's somewhere between $2 and $4 million annually, where the WTED money is spent on that contract training or customized training, as a lot of people like to put it, for the employers across the state. Equipment is the third highest category there at 1.1 for last year. And as you can see at the bottom, I kind of notated too that there's four colleges across the state that had zero carry forward, no money left. And then there was another additional four that only had $50,000 or less in carry forward. Here's the chart on program participants, completers, and businesses. I don't want you to look at the participants and completers and say, oh my, why didn't somebody complete? Because they were participating. This is all overlaps in years. So though we have participants in a particular type of year or particular year, the completers may come from the prior year or could be carried forward to the next year to complete, depending on when the program is running, how long it runs, when the end is, when they complete, et cetera. And then it also lists the number of businesses there which were affected also by the COVID pandemic over the past year. It's down about 1,000 businesses just for the year. So on to the 2022 expenditures plan, planned for the upcoming year and the current year, I should say that we're in. Fifty-three point four percent of the funds are planned to again be spent on career and technical education, which is a slight decrease from this past year. General retraining and training for business customized training is up or planned for the next year. And then career academies is right about the same percentage wise as far as expenditures planned spent. This is how it breaks down using the bar chart here by sector. We do only have to spend 70% of the funds on the targeted industries. However, 87% and the upcoming year is going to be at 92% of the overall expenditures will be spent on those targeted industries across the state.
Is that the amount that's required to be spent?
Seventy.
Okay.
Seventy.
Yep. That hasn't changed though.
Nope. They always spend more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to list a few examples on the different uses for the Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund. These are just a few items that I was, that were called to my attention at the end of the year when the report was done. One of them I want to highlight is the work that was done with Iowa Valley Community College District, and that was an Alliant Energy Program, whereas the summer internship program at Iowa Workforce Development had granted some, some of the students for that program dollars for their wages to work for like Alliant Energy. Whereas Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund dollars from Iowa Valley were spent to pay for or have those students trained so that the student didn't incur any costs. So that's how these types of funding mechanisms can work together. It's an example of braided funding, depending on what the use is needed for and how they work with the employers directly. I did want to touch a little bit, I know, any questions on Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund? That's probably the end right there. There's any big questions on that? I don't know if you want to go ahead and do the action as far as approval for that.
I think that'd be fine since this is a different topic.
We review this at the Community College Council and I would move that we accept. Do you want to do each one separately?
Are they listed separately?
Together, but I think they should be done.
Okay.
I think we should be done separately.
I would move that we approve the Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund 2021 progress report.
I'll second.
Okay, well, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Right, the question carries. You want to do the next one?
Oh. I would move approval of the annual report and fiscal year 2022 plan.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
On to something a little bit, I guess, different than what we were talking about earlier, but I think it's an important thing that we bring forward to the board. And those are the employer workforce assessments that I've been working on basically with the partners across and other agencies since about the end of August of this last year. So the Department of Education, Economic Development Authority, Iowa Workforce Development, STEM Council, Community College Representatives, and then local Chambers of Commerce and/or development groups have been meeting with employers across the state and asking them to share their workforce needs and barriers to employment and things of that nature with us. Then the team comes back together and we've kind of got this process we've been hopefully honing as we go through the time periods of months to months. But we assess then what the employer has to say, bringing that together with the local team to try to identify some of the recommendations that we would make then to that employer on maybe quick fixes and/or long-term thoughts for improving their workforce or getting some of the workforce in the door that they need. Including customized training onsite, English as second language opportunities for new workers. There's a lot of different things that come up around the table while we're talking about it. And we really appreciate, and I think they do too, discussing what it is that employers are needing across the state and how we can meet some of the demands, not only educationally and training wise, but also just knowledge and awareness of the programs that we as a state offer to each one of the employers. So the teams come together, make these recommendations. The recommendations then get sent off to the employer. The employer then lets us know how they feel about that, how they'd like to move forward with that, and sets up a time to meet with the team in order to go and move that ball. So what we've been doing is bi-weekly checking in with the employer, making sure that they're getting that local contact, that local connection, that things are moving forward in a great manner with them and in successful manner, and then documenting that and sending it on to the governor's office for not only successes, but just status on each recommendation that's, that's given to each one of the employers that we meet with. We've done 89 assessments, give or take, since the end of August. Fifty-eight recommendation letters have been sent to the employers, and I believe that's up about 10 since I did this slide. Fifty-seven assessments are upcoming. Bi-weekly status reports, as I mentioned, are sent to the governor's office along with those successes of the customized programs that are being developed and, and some of the recommendations that are being fulfilled. And then the top recommendations I kind of touched on earlier are listed at the bottom. Those are some of the top ones that we've been recommending and then employers have been asking about. That's all I have today, and if you have any questions on any of that, I'd be happy to talk to you about any of the work we've been doing as well.
I just, I want to acknowledge Paula for the work that she's done on this because Paula has a full-time job and she has this on top of that. So we're very grateful for her time and for Jeremy and his team for allowing us to utilize our resources. It's good work, it's making the right connections, it's helping us move things faster than we could have before. I think there'll be some good continued conversation and partnerships that come from this. At the end of the day, if we're better serving the public, that's the goal. So thank you.
Yep, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it seems really awesome that you guys are going out there and actually.
It's been fun, actually.
Talking to them and just saying, what do you need? And then just providing the resources.
Well, and when we, we did the first assessment, basically they said, just come talk to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That seems like the way you get things done, I like it.
Well, the employers appreciate the attention, they really do. And we appreciate being able to go out and have that connection with them to hear it firsthand as to what the issues are and not sit in a bubble and not want, you know, not really know.
Yeah, and maybe in the future down the line, they'll be, you know, they can contact you too if they have any other issues or anything. I'm sure they.
Yeah. And I'm telling you, another, another really cool thing has been having that partnership with all the other agencies and listening to the subject matter experts at each one of the programs, talk about their program, how it integrates with the work that we do that we may or may not have known before, and how great that can be for everyone to come to the table and actually work, work alongside each other, bringing all that expertise. So you can't do it alone, it's, it's got to be a joint effort. So.
Very cool.
Learn, if you need anything along the way, let me know.
Thanks, Paula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, listen. Okay. Dorna, you're on the big screen now. You're on the Jumbotron. Brian, you got demoted to the smaller one, but now you're on two. So you're on either side and now we're looking, we have this huge 95, 95 inch screen. Oh, Dorna, you went away. I know, I, Dorna.
Thank God I went away.
Okay, good. My name's Amy Gitsky, I'm the Bureau Chief for Community Colleges and the Team Lead for our State Accreditation. The community, the journey. So I gave a full presentation of this to the Community College Council last night, so I'll just have a few. I need to hear from Iowa Central Leadership. So our visit was in October 6th and 7th. So this was the first visit that we got to go back to campus after the, being remote for COVID. So it was really, really, really nice to be on campus. I'll start with just a general sense of a profile of the institution for anyone who's maybe not as familiar. We do do these community college profiles every year where we look at the college in relation to the other 14 community colleges in the state. So Iowa Central, you can see where it's located. We were on the Fort Dodge campus, you can see the surrounding counties that it serves. Toward the middle of the pack in terms of enrollment, credit awards, and non-credit. A little bit less in joint enrollment, but still serving over 2,300 joint enrollment students. Fifteenth and online, but I think if you were to go to their campus, you would see that's because they have a very vibrant on-campus presence. So a lot of athletics, theater, music, over 1,100 students looking fit on campus. They rank first in penetration rate, so that's the number of 16-year-olds plus who are involved in some way with the college, a lot of activity, a lot of people in the community involved with the campus. And they ranked lowest in default rate, which is great to see. So just a brief reminder of the process for state accreditation. We do this every 10 years as required by code. A comprehensive visit every 10 years with interim on year five, two components. There's the assurance component and the continuous improvement component for the comprehensive visits. So along with the assurance component, we look at their Higher Learning Commission findings, and they are accredited by the Higher Learning Commission through 3031. And then we review eight state standards. Continuous improvement is not something we're monitoring, it's just that the college gets to choose a topic that they want to learn more about. So our Iowa Central chose serving undecided students. We brought colleagues from North Iowa area community colleges, Northeast and Eastern Iowa, to share practices with how they're serving that population. Going to the eight state standards, just quickly, we looked at faculty qualifications and load. They're doing a great job with, with both faculty load, we're all within guidelines, faculty appeared well-qualified. A few examples where the rationale could have been better explained, so some recommendations in that area and some tips for making sure the files were up to date with their most recent credential. An area where they think they really excel is special needs, serving unique student populations. They have a number of areas where they are creating a welcoming environment for all students. Students are very well-informed about accommodations, tutoring, services available to them, DEI efforts on campus. They have a beautiful one-stop center where students can go and get all of their needs met. A strong focus on safety, security, and accessibility. Recommendations in this area were mostly around approving the grievance policies and procedures. The fourth standard we look at is CTE review. So this is the program review process that they go through. They have a lot of data available, a new program review software called WEED that's created a lot of consistency across their system, both their CTE and their Arts and Sciences programs. And they've recently had programs begin to present to the Board of Trustees, which is a really great way to just make sure the full community is involved with how programs are doing and strategies for improving the programs moving forward. So that was a best practice we noticed. Our recommendations in this area were how they might better use some of their data to drive decision-making around strategic recruitment of diverse student populations, how to close with program planning. There were some opportunities there and recommendations, no findings. The fifth standard is physical plant. They really have a beautiful campus, a lot of recent improvements. Bond Initiative in 2018 allowed them to make some of those campus improvements and then improvements to safety, security, and accessibility, which is a key focus for them. In this area, just a small recommendation around ensuring that the, the plan not only goes to the board, but is approved by the board. In the area of strategic planning, which is the sixth standard, they do have a compliance strategic plan that runs through 2020, 2023. President Ulrich has worked planning on, you know, updating that as he's coming onboard and potentially working with an external consultant to help with that process. So we'd had no findings, but a few recommendations for how to maybe engage more at the campus in that process. Standard looks at the quality faculty plan. So they do have a plan and a committee in place, all with meeting the, all the guidelines. And they've actually linked that very nicely to their strategic plan, which is, I think, a strong, a good strategy. Just recommendation here around engaging. So they're considering developing a faculty professional development committee, and so we just thought that that's a good idea to consider, to engage more of the faculty on campus. The last standard is the Project Early Bird Senior Year Plus Program. NASEP A Reaffirmation through 2627, which is what all the community colleges use for the concurrent enrollment. They're partnering with 19 schools, serving 1,600 students. Strong alignment with the standards and their feedback system. They have a strong feedback system with their orientation and the faculty liaison role. So doing a lot of great things in that area. General themes from the visit, I would think all of us who attended would say they have a very student-focused culture. They were very focused on student safety, well-being, and success, clearly a priority to everyone we talked to. Staff and faculty felt like morale, morale was really quite high given the last couple of years, which was almost surprising to see because it's been difficult for everybody. But staff are very engaged in and outside of the classroom. They're proud of the work they're doing, transparent about areas needing improvement, very open to suggestions that we had, committed to compliance and continuous improvement, and really just a vibrant, active campus that we really enjoyed visiting. So the review team does recommend approval of reaccreditation for Iowa Central for the next five years. So we'll, after we hear from their senior leadership team, have a chance to go on that. So I'll go ahead and turn it over and screen share here again.
Are you saying I'm never gonna zoom in? I will never be on that screen.
Hi, we're not hearing you in the recording. Could somebody verify, please, that one of the mics hasn't been hit by accident?
So we're like on mute or something?
Yes, somebody may have said something on a mic by accident, but anyway, you're back. Thank you.
Oh.
I get muted all the time. Again, my name is Jesse Aric, I have the privilege of serving as Iowa Central Community College President. I started there July 1. On the last 10 years, I've been a superintendent of schools on the K-12 side. My last stop was actually in Fort Dodge. And so it's, it's been a nice homecoming for me because I actually graduated from Iowa Central Community College. This is my home region, and this is my last stop until they boot me out or I retire, one of the two. So before we get started, I do want to thank Amy and Heather and Jeremy for all of their support. And it was a great, a great visit and a great experience. And going into this, this was a win-win because number one, I knew if they had really findings, I had nothing to do with it. But the other win was it was such a great report. We got to really celebrate Dr. Mensner and her team for all the positive things that are going on at Iowa Central. So it wouldn't be a community college presentation without, we'll see if I can. You might have to click for me.
Okay.
Without a hype video. We'll come back to the video here in a little, in a little bit on what makes that really special. But just as a review, obviously, we have 15 community colleges in the state of Iowa. We are up there in that northwest, north-central, I call it the desert oasis of northwest Iowa, where we are just far enough from any sort of civilization of a metro area, where we are that regional hub that people really, really depend on for their, not just their economic needs, but also their workforce development and that first step before they go on to a four-year university. So just quickly, some of the numbers, on any given year, we serve anywhere from 5,700 to 6,500 students at Iowa Central. We serve about 30% of our students are first generational students coming to us. We have 80% of our students who receive some form of financial aid and financial assistance. So obviously, that is somewhat flip-flopped of what your normal track for a four-year university student is. We were formed in 1966, we serve a nine-county region. And the reason that I show folks the map ahead of that is, hey, why aren't we just squared off on those nine, nine counties? Well, because we're here to serve school districts. That's really our number one priority and our number one mission building is serving those 26 public schools and two private schools that we have within our region. We have 1,200 employees, which is another thing that kind of opens people's eyes within our region because we are one of the largest employers within our region. So we have an economical impact by itself. We have a Board of Trustees with nine members. I think I have the longest-serving Board of Trustee. He was originally elected to the board, I believe, in 1979.
Oh, my.
1979. So, and he's still thinking, if I look that good, turning 90, I'll be doing really good. But so we've got a great board, we don't have a lot of turnover. They very, very much value Iowa Central. And we have about a $95 million-ish budget, obviously with 55% of our budget based on tuition and fees that goes with enrollment. And by the way, on enrollment, I can't believe it didn't make the slide, Amy. We actually have the highest enrollment increase for all community colleges in the state of Iowa with a 9.8% increase in total enrollment. So we are, now it sounds great, but that just gets us back to the 2019, you know? So we don't tell a lot of people that. So we have fully rebounded from COVID and once again, we are the number one provider for workforce development within our region. This was posted early on on Facebook. We're really proud about our development over the years. Iowa Central at one point had the fastest-growing enrollment in the entire state, and our campus really, really reflects that. In the upper left-hand corner, you'll see it in the early 70s. And then lower right-hand corner, you'll see what it was here about five years ago. So our campus continues to get better, continues to develop, and that is one of our gems that we have for our region. We've really been talking a lot to people about, hey, what's the purpose of community college within our region? And we boil it down to this. We want students to come to Iowa Central and finish their degrees in the least amount of time possible with the least amount of student loan debt so that they can have a better life. That is really all of the decisions that we make are, you know, in fact, we just had one. We looked at fees that we were charging our nursing students, and we had textbooks and an online fee and, you know, and all these other things. And we said, you know what, this is too much for this degree. We need more nurses, so we cut out some of that and actually reduced it down by almost half, you know? So this is a driving factor because we know all of the research says the more degrees, the more education certifications, and less student loan debt, the better life they're gonna have because they're gonna have a better income driver down the road. So this is, this is the central discussion topic on every decision that we have. Here's just some, we're really proud of, of our graduates, you know? Because what makes Iowa Central special is when we say students, we don't just mean, hey, they came to us from high school. You know, because we have a lot of those. But we also have the single moms trying to get ahead in life. We have the one of only community colleges who do the Second Chance Belt of incarcerated. incarcerated inmates getting a degree prior to being released back into society. We have elderly folks who have always dreamed about some type of diploma and Iowa Central was there to be able to help them. So we're really proud of the diverse group of graduates that we have on a year to year basis. And they in return are really, really proud about what their experience. This, this slide really, and I'll go back to the video. When you watch that video, Iowa Central is really a mini university. We have that feel and I think the team really talked about that while they were on campus. And what makes that great is we're also different from all the other community colleges on having the highest housing for, for students. We have more than any of anybody else in the state with about twelve hundred. We have more athletic activities than any community college in the nation, you know? And I do get some questions from our community folks on, hey, why are you wasting all this money on, you know, athletics? Well, here's what my calculator says. We bring in eleven million dollars a year on our student athletes. It costs us three million dollars a year to have all those athletes. So even with the new math common core, that still equates to a really good number. So, so when you start giving those numbers, people are like, oh, that makes a difference. The other part is this is from an equity standpoint. We have about forty five percent of our students who are graduating with a current technical education degree. They're not gonna get this type of experience going to a four year university or a four year private school. So that is another draw from our region in regards to students can come here, feel like they have that little mini university college experience, but still get a great, great education. And I would be remiss if I didn't say we have some of the best performing arts in the entire state. So some of the productions that we have are phenomenal. And our professor in that area was just inducted into the Iowa, Iowa High School Speech Association's Hall of Fame. So we're really, really proud of her. This is just a boring snapshot of our business and industry side of things. But the reason that I point this out is we, we tend to really focus on the credit side of things. But we're also really, really proud at Iowa Central about our non-credit side of things. Just this past year, we partnered with nearly sixty businesses in our nine county region and served over fourteen thousand individuals who wanted up skills, who wanted non-credit, who wanted something to get them better in their job or trying to upskill so that they could get another job. So that's a lot of people, when you start adding in the credit side and the non-credit side, that's a lot of people. I believe right now we have about six hundred people who are enrolled in our former GED program. If you know the numbers, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand Iowans who do not have a high school diploma. So in our region, we're really, really trying to pump that up. Current initiatives that we're working on, we are launching a strategic plan. And, and I was really happy to see it within the recommendations. We have a really good strategic plan. The problem with our current strategic plan was the process of it. We have a lot of faculty and staff who don't feel like they had a voice in some of the decisions and some of the, some of the feedback that are part of those goals. So what do you do? You hire a consultant, you bring them in as a third party, they do the same thing you did. And then now they feel like they have a voice, you know, in the matter. So that plan is currently going on. We plan on having that completed by May and being able to launch our new initiatives beginning in fall. We are updating our master's facilities plan because we are proud that we just continue to check off those lists of items. But at the same time, there's always things to do when you have buildings that are built in the late sixties, early seventies and not really a stable funding source from, from the state to be able to do that. So we're continuing to work on that. We're also looking at a compensation study. I'll just give you a quick example. When I first showed up on campus, we had like six custodial positions that weren't filled. Okay, so I asked the simple question, well, what are we paying our custodians? The answer was eleven dollars and fifty cents an hour. Well, no one is working for eleven dollars and fifty cents an hour, especially as a custodian. In Fort Dodge, Iowa, you can go to Dunkin' Donuts and pour coffee for fifteen dollars an hour. So we made an adjustment with our custodial group. But that is the same process that we're gonna be taking a look at for our academic advisors, our admissions folks all across the board to make sure as an organization, we're doing all of the things that we need to do for our people who are serving our students. We're also taking a look at the organizational structure. I'll be adding a vice president of operations and a dean of student services. Comparatively with the other community colleges, structurally, we're really, really thin on the administrative side, which is great when you're trying to meet budget needs. However, when you're hearing from students, when you're hearing from faculty and you're hearing from staff, hey, we need more support. You know, we had about a three year period of time where, you know, if someone left, we just absorbed that position and we just traded off those, those roles to somebody else. Well, when none of your deans have a secretary anymore because they've all retired, you know, we want our deans working with faculty. We, we don't want them doing clerical tasks behind a desk. So those are some of the things that we work through. Triton Academy is going to be really, really exciting. This was the downside as the superintendent coming into the same community college because I, I was very vocal as a superintendent of, hey, we have all these career academies across our, our region, but we have zero career academies where you have the largest high school and the biggest critical mass of students, you know, in the region. So as soon as I was the president, then my former board president said, so what are you gonna do about that? So our, our fix and to Dr. Menzner and her team's credit, they put together Triton Academy and the thought process is we're gonna be opening up our campus to, to students to basically fill the empty seats that we have in whatever career path that they're so choosing to really get those concurrent enrollment numbers up. And we're also expanding our online component so that if schedules don't work and all that good stuff, they have better access to those online program, programmings as well. I use the word transformational this morning in cabinet meeting. I really do feel like Triton Academy is gonna be a feather in the cap here down a few row, a few years. Because again, it goes back to our purpose. The more concurrent enrollment courses that our high school students can complete prior to graduating, the less amount of time it's going to take them to finish that AA degree or finish that career technical education certification and the less student loan debt they're gonna have to have. So it all fits together. We discovered really, really quickly that we need to do a better job of promoting our free tuition programs, AKA last dollar scholar. No one understood what I said, what, what I meant when I said last dollar scholar. But then when I say free tuition programs, suddenly kids and parents listen. We kind of combine those together. Decker Auditorium, we have the largest auditorium in the region. We have a twelve hundred seat auditorium. My challenge is going to be to, to convert our auditorium to a new age performing arts center. It's gonna be really, really exciting. And when you talk about a community gem, that is probably our most public, community based building that we have on campus. We are also Iowa Central, we have the only third party, third party biofuel lab testing in the entire nation. And we're building a new one because we've expanded our current capacity of what we have. So you'll be seeing some things in the news and we're partnering with the state of Iowa. The Ag, Mike Nag, to get some grants and all kinds of different things to make the new biofuel lab happen. Our art and technology building is currently being renovated, as well as we've got some updates on our science building. I put those up there because part of my challenge is we did a bond in twenty eighteen. Great, grand, wonderful. And then this whole COVID thing happened, you know? And I don't know if anybody knows about construction costs, but what things cost in twenty eighteen are not necessarily what they are today. So my red line of projects that we get to do has been going through that. But at the end of the day, we are going to continue to invest in our campus as well as our Storm Lake and our Webster City campus as well. Another thing that we are continuing to work on is our guided pathways with our schools. One of the things that, you know, and we just had some discussions with local superintendents about is, you know, parents frustrated, hey, my child took XYZ concurrent enrollment credits and we went to a region school and they're not taking these credits. Okay, well, did you graduate with the AA? No. Okay, well, that's problem one one one. Problem number two, did your counselor take the guided pathway sheet? And did they align the concurrent enrollment courses with what they want to do in their life? No, they just took a bunch of random classes. Okay, well, we're, you know, you're gonna pay some stupid tax here and those are now gonna be electives. Okay, so we're trying to better educate our, our kiddos within our region about the importance of making sure that the concurrent enrollment courses that they're taking with us are, are part of a plan, part of a bigger plan, not just basket weaving because you, you wanted to do, you know, you wanted an open period, you're senior here. And then obviously, our work based learning, I shared those numbers before about what we're already doing on the non-credit side. But we are trying to get down into our high schools and taking a more active approach to get them. Fort Dodge launched IJAG here a couple of years ago, right there in Fort Dodge. So that's another K twelve partnership that we plan on utilizing to do some more work based learning as well. What questions do you have for us?
Question for Amy. I read through the report. I saw that there were no really citations, so to speak. Is that typical?
So there was just the one finding about the presenting the facilities report to the board. Their last interim visit, there were four findings. So last night, we talked a little bit about how much improvement they've made. So we review faculty files every time we do this visit. And so the FY seventeen visit, they had six faculty that were not, that didn't have the proper qualifications. They just made significant improvements. So this time around, there were, you know, minors. Sometimes we had to dig to figure out if the faculty member was qualified. So our recommendations are more how they can improve documentation, but they were all qualified. The non-compliance statement at the FY seventeen or the non-discrimination statement was not in a number of their publications that year. They, they fixed it all. So I think because they've had a number of consistent leadership folks in place in this, the spirit of, you know, listening to, you know, taking the compliance request seriously, they've adjusted a lot of the issues. So we had more recommendations, kind of in the spirit of continuous improvement than, than, you know, clear violations of code, very little of that. So I would say our other visit, we also have a DMAC one that we'll report to you all in March. Also no findings at that visit. So, I mean, I don't know if over the course of time, that tends to be the case, but it's, we like to see it that we're not seeing the same thing over and over again.
Really going back to Jesse's role, then if he's starting out with zero findings, let's see what happens next time. I read through the reports, very good job.
Very good job. I'm super impressed. For Dodge, my mom represented that area for sixteen years in legislature. So she actually, one of her major wins was getting funding for the biofuel lab. So from this.
Your mother?
Yeah. Yeah, so she just sold her house in Fort Dodge like a year and a half ago. So hearing Fort Dodge, I'm like, oh, Harry, miss that house. So, yeah, we loved that house and just living there. So that was really great. But, yeah. So you guys have done great things. So I'm super impressed and happy to hear that things are going well out there. Oh, should I make a motion?
Good team, yeah. So if, next step would just be then to a formal vote on the reaccreditation of Iowa Central.
Do I make a next five?
Community College Council reviewed this yesterday and we were very pleased with the report. Excellent, excellent report. So I would recommend that the, the state board grant, continue the accreditation for Iowa Central Community College.
Second. It's the move to second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? I'm curious. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Done for next? No, that's BRC. Oh, sorry. I almost skipped right over you.
I'm Cassandra Klein. I'm the School Budget Review Committee Liaison for the Department of Education. And I'm here to provide an update for you of the most recent hearing, which was held on December fourteenth. Just a summary of action. So I tend to move through these rather quickly as kind of a high level overview. But as you have questions, please feel free to, to ask. Just as a, a quick update also, in case I haven't told you yet, we also have a new member to the SBRCC, Suba Tani. She's a retired auditor. And so she is a public member that had replaced Martha Brechner, who was a previous really retired superintendent who moved out of state. And so we needed to fill that role midterm. So we tend to start off the committee hearings with informational items. So I'll just read down the list of items. If you have questions, let me know. We reviewed all the unspent balances of districts. One district had a preliminary negative unspent balance. We had an update to the decile rankings for that unspent balance per pupil. We reviewed corrective action plan requirements for late filers of financial reports. And we reviewed the list of late filers for the certified enrollment in facilities elections and save report, which I'm happy to report this year, there were no late filers for either report. Some of the actions taken by the committee included awards of modified supplemental amounts. So AKA, that's the spending authority. Or increased enrollment of about thirty six million. So that would be if I had a certified enrollment last year that funded this year, but then this year I had more students, then they can actually come to the committee to request that kind of on time funding for that, that authority so they can serve those students. Approximately thirty six million for open enrollment out students that were not on the prior year's headcount. So if they had a student who was new to the district this year, but then actually opened and rolled out to another district, that district, that, that student is a resident of would be responsible for paying that. And so we also allow others authority for them to come and request that on time authority as well to pay that tuition. Then two, two awards related to the limited English proficient program. So one is a funding for the current year for those students that are being served beyond the five years that is already allowed in code. And then also for excess costs of providing the program in the prior year. The committee reviews the special education balances for AEA's. And if there are none that exceed the ten percent, then there is no action taken and none exceeded that ten percent this year. The committee also awarded approximately a hundred and forty two million dollars in that spending authority or modified supplemental amount related to special education balances. And there were five districts that appeared to request modified supplemental amount based on costs related to hazard abatement. So those were for abatement of asbestos. The committee also approved use of the unexpended fund balance for startup costs related to statewide voluntary preschool program. So we'll have two more of those. One started this year and one will start next year. Also accepted nine corrective action plans from districts that filed late financial reports. Had a district whose motion failed to approve requests for costs related to the operational intervention of Iowa State Board of Education. And then we had one district that appeared as an informational item. And this goes back to the construction costs for something they had already bonded for. Now that they're starting to build, realize that they are going to be short. And so came to the committee three years before they'll actually need the money to say, hey, in three years, we're gonna come back and we're going to request approximately eight million dollars. And so do you have any questions now or things you'd wanna know now that we could plan for over the next three years? That will help you approve the request in three years. So had the request been for use of the money next year, we, the department likely would have recommended to approve, the committee likely would have acted to approve. It's just that it's three years in advance. And so that's why they didn't approve it. So it was an informational item only. Do you have any questions?
You didn't mention the state board of education.
I did mention that. Do you want me to mention that again?
You don't care to expand on that a little bit?
I will. Davenport Community School District came. They had provided a list of costs that they incurred related to the intervention of the state board. Those were additional staff costs, things like that. So when they had duplicate staff, so when there was a district paid superintendent, as well as one that was appointed by the state board, same for the CFO and some others. And so the request was for the modified supplemental amounts, the additional spending authority related to that. So there were, there normally are five voting members of the SBRC. At that hearing, there were four. And so what happened is we had two members that, the motion was to approve, two of them voted to approve, and then two of them voted nay. So the motion failed to approve their request.
And to clarify, typically, the SBRC would provide a recommendation. In this case, they did not because of our. involvement in that matter, so we made no recommendation, let the board itself make a recommendation and then vote on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I feel like we, oh, sorry, go ahead. I feel like we've talked about this before, but the corrective action plans for districts who file late, so districts, I mean, so is there a way to get them to file, I mean, like on time? I guess, I, there must be probably a multitude of reasons and I don't know if COVID has anything to do with it, but I mean, them filing, I mean, because I feel like this happens every year, so.
It does happen every year and, and really nine this year is a lot. So last year, actually for, it's been, I think, eight or nine years since we've had that many. And so looking and diving into each of the district's reasons that they provided as part of the corrective action plan, they would recognize what it is that caused the late filing and then what they're going to do different, so that doesn't occur in the future. There are all sorts of different reasons. I would say the trend through them, if there was one, happened to be staff. Whether there was staff out with COVID for two weeks at the time it was due, or they had staff that left that they weren't able to fill. And so people were doing multiple positions. Or if staff just left and they hadn't been filled and then you're, they're, they're, you know, asking neighboring SBOs to help and they have to finish their own first. It was really a, a really pretty good mix of, of those things. But I would say that would be the one trend that, that went through it. So the last couple of years, we had between districts and AEAs, we've only had one or two of the last few years, so question.
I'm not used to a new table.
I know, there's not a lot of legroom down here.
At the end of the table.
We're on last agenda item for today, so for those of you that I don't know very well yet, I'm Amy Williamson, I am the deputy director for learning and results. Davenport has joined us and they're here to provide their monthly update. It's almost monthly update on how their corrective actions are going. And I will let TJ Snackla go through those. My overview is just to give you a reminder that your next opportunity to vote on their accreditation status in Davenport will be at the March meeting. And you decided that at the November meeting, that you're going to get in March. And you'll have an opportunity then to determine whether you want to continue with state oversight that is given to Director Lebo. Do you want to go to not having conditional accreditation, having full accreditation? We'll have recommendations for you then, we can walk through that process of getting kind of into conditional accreditation to state. And then just in terms of the report on their progress right now, draw your attention to the fact that they have marked considerable progress. And if you draw your eye to the column, yours is not in color unless you're looking on the screen. If you're looking on the screen, that's awesome. The column on status of activity completion, that's the one that they rate for us every month on how they're doing and meeting their goal. And so there's a lot of green, a lot more green than there used to be, so everything's at least are working. And many of them are either complete or near completion. And so that's where we wanted to go. With that, I'm not going to go over any of the details that have been put in there, I'm going to let TJ do that. So I'll go.
Well, first of all, thank you for letting us appear today and speak. As always, it's, it's a pleasure to tell our story. First off, thank you so much for coming to Davenport. I know that it was hard to get that many board members there and to have four states, state school board members come to Davenport. And the attention and, and the showing of how much you care about what you're doing was felt. It was a long day and we greatly appreciate it. To fill everybody else in, our state school board members, Dr. Lebo was busy at the Mississippi Bend AEA, which is where I was with the superintendent's meeting. But our four state board members that came toured Buchanan Elementary School, which is our fourth highest low SDS school in, in Davenport, where they saw the implementation of early literacy plan that we're working towards right now in grades through three, and then had a debrief with the principal of that building. From there, our, we transitioned to Davenport Central, where there was probably one of the coolest interactions I've seen between adults and students and as, as our state board members interacted with our youth leadership team. And it was very authentic, our students presented their ideas. They actually took some ideas from our, from, I believe it was you, President Axio, that, hey, what about keeping track and making sure? And they, they took that idea and they went with it. And you could tell that that's their meeting and that the adults are facilitating it. It's, it's incredible to see something that you planned for and it come to life exactly the way that you planned for it. I believe one of the quotes that I wanted to highlight today was, why were you selected? I think somebody asked, why do you think you were selected? And, and one of the students spoke up and said, well, I think we all have different friend groups and that we go out and we seek the input of our different friend groups and we come back here. And then I think the other reason we were selected is because we're really outspoken and they know that we were willing to communicate inside the meeting, which is exactly what is portrayed inside that, that group. So from there, we had a regular school board meeting and you have no idea the impact that you had on our district. First of all, with our current situation that we're in the Davenport Plan that we're working, to hear from our oversight group, it, it was a huge uplift. And then the fact that we have COVID going on and any kind of good news, let alone from the highest organization in the state of Iowa, has really helped move our, move Davenport Community Schools farther. So I wanted to highlight that visit because it really did move the spirits of our teachers, our leaders. And it was greatly appreciated. We continue to move forward on all, on the Davenport Plan. We are moving as fast as we can on each one of those citations, be more than happy to answer any questions that you have about any of the citations. I think you're very familiar with the Davenport Plan and how we're moving forward. I did want to highlight one piece of it that occurred today. So President Goza was asked to facilitate an IESB president's workshop today on some of the things that, that he has been implementing in Davenport. Example, how to conduct your open forums to seek input from community members, which is what some of the things that we have been working on. How to ensure that your goals are constantly being worked on. And so I've, I've been fortunate enough to attend some of those meetings as a partner. And, and Dan did an excellent job representing our district today as, as he, as he always does, pushing everything for kids. And so those are the two things that I'd like to highlight today and, and answer any questions that you have for us.
Well, thank you as always for being here, that visit was awesome. And we were talking about during our board reports over lunch, what an incredible visit that was. It was really nice to be able to get out there and just get in the schools. It's always a really bright spot when we can do that, so thank you for letting us come.
Thank you for coming, meant the world to us.
I was looking through the, the updated report and very pleased to see a lot of green.
A lot of green.
And there's, I don't know, three areas or so that you're working on and making some improvements. And it looks like you're, you're very well on your, on your way. But the question I have for you is that, you know, we'll see what happens at the March meeting, but sometime or another, you have all these plans in place and you're working on them. Are you going to keep the momentum going, you know? Because as you know, there's only so much time and effort and these things are important, how, how are you going to keep the ball rolling?
And that's an excellent question, and I think what the most important part of the plan is, is about systems. It's about developing routines. To give you an example, one of the things that we, over the course of the last three years, have developed through the leadership of your, your team is systems of accountability. And one of those would be a, a district student achievement team. So one of the things that we're developing right now is a cadence, we, our board reviews data. But now what we are looking for is a, is a routine and a cadence for how we review our data. We set our, our, our goals, we set our building level plans, and then we, we attach all of our, our evaluation systems to those plans. And that's part of, that's part of the leadership restructuring. Right now, we are partnering with the AEA and SAI to learn the new ISL standards. And so, so that system's being created. So to answer your questions, how do, how do we keep the momentum, it's about systems. So that way, no matter what happens, the system will continue to move forward. And you do that with procedures, manuals, systems, things that are repeatable. To where if, if, if somebody in this very, you, you heard Cassandra talk about earlier, people are leaving, people are taking different jobs. And so the ability to bring somebody in, onboard them into a system is, is a, is a very important next step. And so that's what we're working on. Another example of a system would be, you know, our, our board, and you hear me talk about this all the time, but the way that we report our finances, our finances are not perfect, but we are heading in the right direction. And the reason that we do that is we, we, we show where we've been, we show where we're going every month. And two school board members that are very serious about that review that, we ask questions, and that makes us be incredibly prepared for the questions that our local school board are asking for us. The other things that, that are going to continue to move us forward is the, the Department of Education has accountability measures for everybody across the state that catch things that require people to, to, to prepare reports or citations that may occur. And, and so while we are coming, while the gradual release from the Department of Ed, as, as we, we hope is happening, it's, it's transitioning more into the regular accountability of a school system. And so that's what we feel. And, and example of that would be the CASA system. So we are realigning our new cabinet members to the CASA system and sharing exactly what your responsibilities are. And so it's more of that tier one level of support that all school districts have. And so that, that, those are some of the, some of the ways that we are going to continue to move this forward. Plus, I think earlier, I think about before spring break, I think, I think our district had it last year. Sorry, our district had an aha moment, this is our plan, this isn't a checklist, this is, this is, this is what we, we, we believe in this and we're going to move forward. And we, and we've, from the board president to everybody in our district, that's, that's how we're moving forward. So I, I hope that kind of addresses some of the.
Yeah, I was glad, especially here you have the systems in place and that, what you said about being your, your plan as far as a Davenport School District crime rather than the Department of Ed.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a slightly funny story to go with what you just said about CASA. I think it may have become intelligent because it malfunctioned and just specifically, we don't know why. Picked out TJ and decided to email him like a hundred times a day. Every 11 minutes, tell him that he was being cited.
I woke up one morning and my eye was literally twitching and I.
Every 11 minutes.
Oh my god.
We couldn't stop it for a while and I was like.
It was a couple of days, my eye just started twitching.
That has to be really traumatic. That's hilarious.
Because it didn't do it to anybody else in the state. Like, no one's doing this.
It's like a cruel joke.
You have any comments or questions for TJ?
It's very encouraging what I said.
Yeah. Do you present, does it, do you want to say anything, do you want to say anything, either of you?
I just, well, for being a board president, I appreciate you all coming down and the board members were able to interact. Thanks for the kudos on the ISB thing, it's kind of different from people taking all the classes to them asking you to do that, but you do learn a lot of stuff. And it's nice when you have people that you're able to share those experiences with, so that they don't go down the path that, you know, your district did and things like that. And again, you know, I know it took a while for the district to get to where they, where we were. And we're coming out of that, I realize it's going to take time to come out of that, but from my recollection, all the people that were in the higher up positions that were there, that were a part of that are no longer a part of our district. So that's a huge lift. And with the restructuring and everything like that, it's, it's worked out a lot better and stuff. And it also helped our board develop a lot better too, so now we're discussing things that we're voting on. Which I just want to be very clear, our board was always very adamant about that. It sucks getting something on a Friday, told you got to vote on it on a Monday. And, you know, I'm not an educator, I'm a construction worker. But I think our board members have went above and beyond, you know, what even what else we do. But we are the third or fourth largest district in the state, so we should show that. But it was a huge, huge thing for our community alone. Because, I mean, after the meeting when you all said you were going to go until March, you know what the headlines were the next day? Davenport's still under accreditation by the state and things like that. So it was nice to have you all come in and say that, because then there was nice articles, you know, that. And then when they got to quote some of you on some things, so that, it helps a lot. It helps our community to know that, you know, we're doing the right things and stuff like that. So we greatly appreciate that, I'm glad you all were able to tour it. I could not tour the central one because I'm on the AEA board now as well, so I had to go to that meeting. But again, we appreciate it very, very much.
TJ, I have a question, but maybe it was answered that day and I've forgotten, but the phonics program, 95%, what's it called?
Yep, 95%.
And it's brand new this year. What kind of success are you expecting at the end of this first year? I know you won't have anything to compare it to, but do you have some benchmarks that you'll be looking for?
Yeah, actually, we're getting ready to take our winter benchmark now and so we'll be able to tell the impact of it. So I think it's really important for us to relay where we are in the early literacy journey is, is establishing the notion that our students struggle and when they struggle, what do we do? So in the continuum of our reading program, the, the slice that you saw was a piece about that big. And so that piece that was this big was causing us a lot of, a lot of confusion because we were using 15 different tools to, to solve that. So we went and found one that fit the needs to where teachers don't have to go out and use Hagerty foundations, handwriting without tiers. It was all wrapped into one and that, that, that hearing and production of sounds and attaching a sound to a letter, that, that notion. And so that is also tied to our intervention system. So we use in tier two and tier three, so when the students don't quite understand that main lesson, then there's a tier two and a tier three. Well, our, our system intervention is 95% group, which is a state-approved intervention. So we have diagnostic assessments that we can take, we are, we have collaborative teacher teams that meet that, that regroup students for the right intervention and we progress monitor every two weeks, which is the exact system that the state set up. So the bigger picture is, okay, what about the rest of the parts of the continuum? And so that's where we are now. So we, we are, we are evaluating, what, what does the rest of the early literacy, what does the rest of our early literacy continuum look like and what's the? So we're gathering data, we're doing analysis of, of, of what it is that we, the direction that we need to head in the rest of it. But I, I am cautiously optimistic about the direction that we're heading. It's also very difficult because it's a pandemic. I mean, we're getting, we're, we're getting students back that have never been to school in there in the second grade. So all of those instances where we're, we're also have to learn how to care for one another, the trauma associated with that. So all of those things are there too. So we, we, we are taking our benchmark and I think it started this week or next, this week, next week. And, and we should get our results back from that to see exactly what, if, if the needle's being moved. And then from there, we'll, we'll make adjustments. And in our assessment review calendar that we, that we utilize at the board level, that data will be, will, will be gone through by our leadership team in our buildings and then come to the school. will, will be gone through by our leadership team in our buildings and then come to the school board for review as well. So that's, that's our cadence for reviewing data. So I'm cautiously optimistic.
I think that's good. Yeah, it was really funny. After I went to that, after we went out there and I was going to those classrooms and I said at the, at the board meeting that, you know, I was hoping that Des Moines Public Schools is doing something similar because my son is going to kindergarten next year and he's in pre K plus. And then it was so odd, the next week, I, we, the preschool sends home like a weekly newsletter that I get from the, he has two different teachers. And so they send home like a little newsletter telling what's going on in the week. And they're telling me exactly what they were doing in the classroom about, you know, making sure that you're disconnecting words and then they recognize and they can say, you know. And so I was like, whoa, I was like, I just saw this in a classroom. And so they're telling us that we should be doing this at home with our children because the next are so important and blah, blah. And I was like, wow, I was like, Davenport is doing it right. Wow. I was like, that is so cool. So I'm, I'm trying to do it at home and I'm like, this is really hard.
It's a science.
Yeah. I don't know if I should be doing it, but.
Just the comment, I remember a year or so ago, the, the nature and the content of our conversations with Des Moines, or excuse the Davenport leadership and what we were talking about then compared to what we're talking about today is is pretty amazing.
I was thinking the exact same thing, John. And I was just sort of enjoying it.
Talking about nuts and bolts. Yes, you have to have a crisis plan and yes, you have to be financially liable and kudos.
Yep. Other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you guys coming out here.
Yeah, thank you.
Every single time. Now, now we know that. We know that. Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
If there's any other questions or comments, that is our last item for the day. Thank you for a very long day. I appreciate your work and look forward to seeing you all next time. Safe travels.
You do. Oh, I, I moved to adjourn.
That's right.